Yep, we got a knock on the door there.
Recording in progress.
Okay, let's start over again. This is Steve Lionel, Vice Chair of the City of Nashville Zoning Board of Adjustment, and this is the April 26, 2022 zoning board meeting. Our Chair, Mary Ellen McKay, could not be with us tonight. This evening's meeting will be conducted in a hybrid format. The meeting is accessible in person in the third floor auditorium of Nashville City Hall, 229 Main Street, and via Zoom with the link posted in all public meeting agendas. Attendance via telephone is available using the Zoom connection details. Minutes of tonight's meeting, as well as audio and video recordings, will be available later at nashua nh.gov/AgendaCenter. Select Zoning Board of Adjustment. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting, please call 603-821-2049, and they will help you connect. In the event that the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. The Chair is in control of the meeting. To the extent practicable and advisable, the Board will follow the procedures as identified in its bylaws. The applicant will have 15 minutes to present their case, followed by questions by the Board. Next, persons wishing to speak in favor or with questions or opposition will be asked to speak for up to five minutes each. Finally, one and only one person with questions or in opposition will be permitted to speak again for five minutes before the Board deliberates and determines an outcome. There will be a clock sometimes visible on the Zoom meeting, and Ms. Poirier will let us know if somebody is starting to run over. I'll try to keep track of it myself. If you are participating by Zoom and wish to speak when public input is requested, please use the raise hand option, which can be found under Reactions if you're using a computer or the More menu on a phone or tablet. The Chair will call you in turn. Please use the lower hand option when done. Also, please mute your microphone until called to speak. Note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call. Tonight, we will be hearing requests for deviation from the Nashville zoning code in the form of applications for special exceptions and variances. A special exception is a request that seeks permission to do something that the zoning ordinance permits only under special circumstances. To grant a special exception, five points of law are required to be met. These are outlined in the application and will be summarized in Board motions. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that ordinance does not permit. Variances also have five points of law to be met, different from those for special exceptions. Per the City of Nashville bylaws and State of New Hampshire revised statutes, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any motion. In addition, this Board will hear all scheduled cases if a quorum of three voting Board members is present at this meeting, and we do have three members present. Any citizen has the right to contest the decision that this Board makes. Should we make a decision that you believe is an error, you have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received by the City of Nashville Planning Department within 30 calendar days from the date of decision. Should this Board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court. Please contact the City Planning Department for more information. So for this meeting tonight, we have the following full Board members in attendance. We have myself, Steve Lionel, I serve as the Vice Chair. We have Mr. Jack Courier, who serves as our clerk, and we have Mr. JP Boucher. And that's all we have tonight, so we have no alternate members in attendance. Also, from City staff, we have Ms. Kate Poirier, who is our zoning coordinator, and Mr. Matt Sullivan, who is the Planning Department Director. We'll start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance, and since there are no members attending by Zoom, I won't have to read the next piece of text. So JP Boucher.
Mr. Boucher is present.
Jack Courier.
Mr. Courier is present.
And I, Steve Lionel, am present. And there are no alternates, so I don't have to talk about that either. Ms. Poirier, are there any changes to the agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are no changes to the agenda as shown.
Great, thank you. Okay, I will now read the first case into the record. Caro Properties, Inc., owner Edgar Sherman, Edgar Sherman Design LLC, applicant, 141 Canal Street, Unit 0, Sheet 41, Lot 58, requesting use variance from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Item 74. To allow applicant's business to obtain a federal firearms license to design products to protect law enforcement officers and military personnel. This is in the GI Zone, Ward 3. Before we get started, Alderman Klee has requested that she be given a few minutes to speak about this case because she has another meeting to attend. So Alderman Klee, please step up and say whatever it is you want to say.
Thank you very much for giving me this time. I'm not speaking, I'm sorry, I'm Alderman Patricia Klee from Ward 3.
And you need to give your address.
Sure, 9 Maywood Drive, right here in Nashville. Thank you. I'm not here to speak for or against this particular applicant, but I did want to speak to some concerns that I have. And I asked to speak ahead of time because I have the meeting, and it will also give the applicant the opportunity to dispel any of my concerns. One of the concerns that I have is that, I always refer to things as unintended consequences. When we approve something, what could possibly happen in the future? So if we approve this, one of the questions that I had asked to Mr. Fock was, would that also give the applicant the ability, the ability to not just design but possibly manufacture? Of course, the space is much smaller, and people would say you can't manufacture that type of firearms or anything of that nature. That is true, I agree with that. However, with 3D printers, we all know that there are things called ghost firearms, ghost guns, and so on. So that was really one of my concerns. I had asked questions such as if this is approved for this property owner to get that type of a variance because, and I also want to clarify something. I believe this property owner to be extremely a good person, a good company. I don't think they would do anything that could harm the city in any way. So I need to make sure I get that out there. I don't know the person that will be leasing this place, and I understand that need for it, so I can't speak to them in any such way, and I don't want to say anything negative about anybody. But that is just one of my concerns. So if we give this approval, and then say somewhere down the road, someone else came in, and this has been given as an exception and so on, will the next person be able to maybe manufacture? I, as a state rep, I've gone to places where these things can be manufactured, in a room no bigger than this with multiple 3D printers. And that kind of concerns me. That area is my ward. It's Ward 3. I love every part of Ward 3, but there, sometimes there are some words where, some areas that there could be more things that could be happening there that put a bad light on that area. So again, I believe that this company would do all the right things if given the approval. I think that they would vet anybody that went in there, but I don't know 10 years down the road who's going to be owning this property and who would be coming in. So that's just my concern, and thank you so much for hearing me.
Thank you. Okay, now the, someone representing the applicant, please come up and tell us, walk us through the application. You'll have time afterwards to comment on Alderman Klee's questions.
Okay, so I should have that separate?
You can do that separately.
Okay, all right. My name's Edgar Sherman. I'm the owner of Edgar Sherman Design. The submission for the application is from me. I live at 4 Cattigan Way, Nashville, New Hampshire, 03062. Good to go from there?
Yep.
Awesome. So hello, everyone. Thank you for taking the time to come here and look over the application that we're hoping to be submitted. We have been in business for about five years now, developing lifesaving military and law enforcement equipment. I started my career by working at a company in Boston called OpsCor, designing helmets for law enforcement and military members. That kickstarted my drive to starting my own company because I found that there were still problems in the market that weren't helmet-related, that needed to be solved to help our service members. Our company was founded from the success of a rifle sling that I designed that has actually outfitted local law enforcement in the area around here and has been outfitted special operations within the U.S. that have gone on deployments all over the world. I designed that rifle sling from lots of observation from military and law enforcement members, but also from my own testing, going to precision shooting competitions and things of the like, so that way I could understand the problems that users were facing. From all those experiences and understanding those problems, I was able to create a product that has now helped thousands of people, and I wouldn't have been able to do so without truly understanding the problems they're facing. And so that was a huge component of the company and its success and to growth. So, because, I'm sorry. The reason we are looking to get our federal firearms license is so that we can continue to develop solutions to problems our end users face, to the best of our capabilities, all while abiding by the established laws. By having an FFL, we will be able to legally possess firearms our service members use to develop the best equipment for their needs. This zoning variance will allow us to expand our company further and bring more jobs to the area, increasing local business support as we manufacture everything in New Hampshire. We all eat at the local restaurants around here every day, and we live within the area. We looked into more locations with the appropriate zoning, but the cost to uplift our equipment and our staff, along with the pricing of other rental properties, were just too significant in order for us to move and adjust accordingly. Our location's also great because we have clients that fly into Manchester or to Boston Logan, and having them have a short drive is ideal. We also take inspiration from other design companies, and having Boston be really close is really important to us because we can go and have lots of different meetings and events out in the city and learn more out of how we can go and develop better equipment. We know that there won't be any downsides to the zoning being approved because it's not changing the foot traffic in the area. We aren't going to become a public firearms dealer, sale place, or anything like that. We're not going to be a gun store that people can go to. It's primarily just for us to design and develop equipment and do so legally and safely. And, yeah, so all the uses for the FFL will all be for internal usage. And we've been here in Nashville for two years now. We have a great relationship with all those around us, along with the owners at Caro Properties and their staff, along with all the neighbors in the building. And so your approval of this will allow us to grow further and help bring more jobs to the area, and then thank you for your time.
Okay, questions from the Board? Mr. Courier.
Just, have you been in operation at this location for two years, or are you somewhere else right now?
We've been out of operation for this location for two years. Before that, I was operating my sewing machines in the third story of my townhouse. And then we got to go and expand and work with Caro Properties, and then I've been able to hire people because of it.
So, okay, so you'll be, you prototype your things and such like that?
Yep, yeah, all the prototyping we do in-house and all the testing we try to do in-house. So we've got sewing machines, we've got like a little laser cutter so we can cut fabric, and we'll sew that all up in-house, then we'll go and test it ourselves. And then once we get through that testing process, then we'll send it out to our members within special operations and the Army and get feedback from them. And then that's how we've been able to get through that testing process, so that way whenever we pass off equipment or sell equipment, we know that it's truly going to be something that people can trust with their lives.
So ultimately, like, a goal would be to, you know, develop like a product that's well-accepted, and then is it sold off, or just you contract out the manufacturer of it, or?
So we do some of the manufacturing in-house, and we also support, there's another company in the building that does sewing for us, and then we've got other companies in New Hampshire that do everything for that. So we're primarily a design firm, so we do all the designing and developing ourselves, and then we keep the production to other companies that specialize in production stateside, specifically in New Hampshire.
All right, thanks a lot.
Absolutely.
Yeah, Mr. Boucher. So we'll follow up now with the Alderman's comments. Just curious, so what part of your business is actually with actual firearms?
So that's all on the testing and development side. So if we go and work with any of the Tier 1 units in the military, and they say, hey, this is the weapon system we're using, but we're having issues with our gear and these avenues, we want to be able to go and purchase that equipment or borrow that equipment and have that legally on our books and transferred. And so that's where the firearms go. So we have a different area that we go to, a firearms range, and that's where we do all of our testing for that, and then in-house being able to do fitment and accessories attaching on the equipment there.
So, so just to clarify, if I understand you correctly, the products you sell are products obviously used by the military in conjunction with firearms, but you're not actually, at this point, you're not looking to manufacture firearms?
No, so the reason that we're applying for this federal firearms license is so that if we were to go and assemble firearms in-house, not for commercial sales or anything like that, but for us to do development, it's a lot cheaper to go and buy components of something and then legally assemble it and have all the paperwork to go through that, so that way we can get the proper equipment. Or we work with Sig Sauer, and they're a local company, and they could transfer us one of the weapon systems that's being tested, and then we can go and provide feedback for it and such, but we want to make sure that we go doing that legally and have all the paperwork to go through it.
So, again, I think that's what I mostly understood was basically is the possession of the firearms and not necessarily the design of an original firearm or?
Yeah, we're not going to become a giant manufacturer of all these weapons or anything like that. We just want to make sure that we have all the legalities, so that way if we were to go and assemble a firearm or technically manufacture one just by serializing it and putting all the parts together, that we're doing so legally.
All right, thank you.
I didn't have any further questions.
Okay.
Should I address the original comment, or should I?
I think you should wait until we've gotten input from members of the public. They may have additional questions because the protocol is that the applicant has five minutes to respond to everything that's been brought up so far.
Awesome, all right, well, thank you, guys.
So you can sit down for now, okay? Is there anybody present in the room who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Not seeing anybody. Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Please use the raise hand feature if you do. I can see, but I'm not seeing anybody, okay? Is there anybody in the room with questions, concerns, or opposition to this application? Not seeing anybody. Is there anybody on Zoom with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application?
Hi, can anybody hear me? I'm on Zoom, but through my phone.
You're on the phone, okay. Please give your name and address for the record and speak up a bit because it's a little bit hard for me to hear you.
Yeah, how is this? Can you hear me okay now?
Well, no.
All right, how about that? I'm in a different part of my house.
Well, we'll just have to be very quiet and listen.
Okay, well, I'm gonna go ahead, but you stop me if I become unreadable, okay?
Okay, please give your name and address for the record.
So my name is Kirk Thompson. I live at 11 Westville Road in Brookline. I work in Hollis. I was introduced professionally to Edgar in 2020, and I've come to know him to be, you know, a savvy businessman and also a man of impeccable moral character. Full disclosure, I am a client of his, so I've purchased his goods in the past. I know that he takes business security and site security very, it's important to him, so I'm not concerned about anything being stolen from that residence. I know the, his claims about what he's planning to do with this to be true. I understand what he's trying to do with it and why it's important to his business, and I confirm that he's on the level. What he's asking for is to allow him to conduct his business in a way that complies with federal law. I think that's important to everyone. And just to, just to speak to what the Alderman was talking about with ghost guns and all that, spaceless, sounds like she was just repeating some talking points. None of this is any relevance to Edgar and his business, and I'm in full support of what he's asking for. Thank you.
Okay, so just to be clear, you are in support of the application?
Correct.
Okay, fine. Is there anybody else on Zoom with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? No, okay. Then the applicant, please come back up and, you know, address any comments that you have heard.
Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
I don't remember the woman's name, but she?
Alderman Klee.
Okay, so she addressed, I think, two main points that I can address or rebuttal or rebut to. The first was talking about ghost guns. That is where you're to go and manufacture a firearm and not serialize it, and at this time, I believe that is illegal. And what we're trying to do is have the legal system, so that way if there were to be a situation where we needed to create a firearm, we can do so legally and following all those laws. And then jumping to her concern about the future of having this zoning applied to whoever might be a future tenant there, you still have to go and create a, you still have to apply to become an FFL, so you still have to work with the ATF and get your licensing for all of that, so it wouldn't actually transfer over. So whoever the next client is that can move into our facility that we are at right now, they would still have to go through all of the application process to get their federal firearms license, of which includes FBI background checks, communication with the ATF, and all sorts of other paperwork. So by having the zoning approved for that, it doesn't actually make it easier for anyone who's in the future to go and get firearms or anything like that. They still have to go through the process, it's just allowing for the zoning for that specific room.
Okay, and just to clarify, again, although maybe you've already said this, you're, you will, you might be assembling, you might actually be manufacturing parts for guns as part of your design process, but you're not going to be essentially creating guns that for sale or?
No, everything is for internal testing and things of the like. We're not trying to go and become a gun store or anything like that. We just want to be able to go and be in possession of the things that we're designing equipment for.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions for the applicant? No? Okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Boucher, your comments?
After hearing the testimony in more detail, I believe that the criteria met for this application. It's very clear to me what the applicant is looking to do. Again, the applicant's been in business there for some years, and I think this is just a natural progression for that, for this applicant. And I think also duly noted, as the applicant noted, just because this variance is an act, it doesn't mean that just anybody can walk in. Obviously, there's some rigorous vetting that goes on to get licenses. So I also think that, you know, again, we've got BAE next door, not that it's a similar business, but I think it's in its position in the right place in the city. So with that, I don't really have anything that would prevent me from voting against the application.
Mr. Courier.
In short, I'm in favor for really the reasons that Mr. Boucher spoke to. I mean, it's interesting, you noted BAE next door, because I thought, well, in a way, this is a similar business, but on a teeny tiny scale. And, well, I think, you know, there was some discussion or testimony about, you know, expense of moving to a proper zone. I'm not sure if that's a criteria, but this applicant's been in business there for two years and is using resources within the building. I think that is a special condition. I think it would be really a hardship to have this business, you know, kind of force it to move, so to speak, if it wants to grow. So I think it meets a criteria of a use variance, and I'm in support of it.
Thank you. I'm also in support of the application, and I am convinced that we're not opening a Pandora's box of possible future problems. Although I do have a question. What exactly are we asking of variance? It's a use variance, and is there, have we decided that it's going to be use number 74, and that's what they're getting a variance to allow in that zone? Is that the idea?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As described to us during the application process, we felt it qualified under the smithing requirements. This is a GI zone, and R and D research and development is permitted by right. So as a smithing, we, that is not a permitted use, so this is going under a use variance.
All right, that's all I have to say. Somebody care to make a motion?
Oh, I just wanted to get one other thing. You know, I appreciate Alderman Klee's testimony, but I guess I didn't, I just wanted to speak directly to that, that I, I guess I feel that this potential growth of a business does not, to me, it doesn't bring a concern to the neighborhood. I think it's well organized, well protected, and I don't see it as a threat to the local community in any way. I just wanted to make sure I got that out.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Boucher, thank you for your, you make a motion? Great.
Yep. I'd like to make a motion to approve the use variance for Caro Properties Incorporated. Owner Edgar Sherman, Edgar Sherman Design LLC. The applicant is 141 Canal Street, Unit 0, Sheet 41, Lot 58. Requesting use variance from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 74, to allow applicant's business to obtain a federal firearms license to design products to protect law enforcement officers and military personnel, so in the GI Zone, Ward 3. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of property, given the special conditions of property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. Again, we are noting that the applicant has been there for several years. It is right next to BAE, and we find that it would be somewhat of a hardship at this point for the applicant to be looking for another location. We find that it is within the sparent intent of the ordinance. We find it will not adversely affect property values surrounding parcels. We find it's not contrary to public's interests, and we find that substantial justice would be served. Again, I make a motion to approve the use variance.
I'll second it. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Lionel, vote in favor. That's three to nothing. Congratulations, your variance has been approved. Please be aware, there's a 30-day window of appeal. Contact the Planning Department if you have any questions.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to case number two. Owner is John J. Flatley Company, address L, which means land, Daniel Webster Highway and L Dozer Road, also known as Innovative Way Extension, Sheet A, Lots 44 and 172. Requesting special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-15A, do permanently impact 725 square feet of wetland, impact associated with upgrading existing twin 36-inch CPP to box culvert, I don't know what CPP is, and 7,825 square foot of wetland buffer impacts associated with site grading. This is in the PI Zone, Ward 8. And we have somebody to speak for the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. My name is Gerald Preunier. I'm attorney with offices at 20 Trafalgar Square in Nashville, and I'm here with our project engineer Chad Brandon. Before I proceed any further, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make my objection known as to the fact proceeding with the three-member board versus our right to have a five-member board. And I want to protect my rights, but we will proceed with the three-member board.
I will comment, Attorney Preunier, that there is no such right, but your comment is noted.
Thank you. The location of this building is in the south end of Nashville, off of Innovative Way. It really is at the end of Innovative Way. The plan was just up here. Innovative Way is at the end. It's going north, and it's going past the hotels and comes to the end of its way right now. It comes into the woods at the end of the street. The project is for the construction of a 48,000-square-foot light industrial R and D facility. The special exception is because we're impacting 725 square feet of wetland to construct a culvert. Okay, the culvert, if you could just show where the culvert is, is across Innovative Way and 7,825 square feet of wetland impact for site grading, including the grading around the culvert and in the northeastern corner of the Within premises. We have received a favorable recommendation from the Conservation Commission with conditions, with five conditions which we agree to comply with. I believe you have that letter in your package.
We do.
The spirit and condition is listed on the table of uses, in the table of uses, for a special exception. Traffic reports have been made and have been completed and will not cause undue traffic congestion or unduly impaired pedestrian safety with the construction of the project. The project will not over- The project will not overload public utilities. All utilities will be brought to the site, public utilities, and will be provided to the site. There are special regulations. There are nine of them. They have been attached to the application. I will read them, Mr. Chairman, if you feel necessary. Otherwise, they are part of the record as being part of, attached to the application.
If you, you are stipulating that the applicant will agree, agrees to all of the special conditions, which I do see here in the application?
Yes.
Then, then you don't need to read through them.
The last special, special condition is that the use will not impair the integrity or be out of character of the district or embellish the neighborhood. It will be detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of the residents of the city. This is an area that has many of the similar type buildings constructed in the area, and they would not impair or be out of character with the other buildings in the area. I believe, I did mention the Conservation Letter and that you have that in the package, I believe.
We do, yes.
The favorable. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. I'd be glad to answer any question the board may have.
Questions from the board? Mr. Carrier?
Just to clarify, the proposed culvert, is it larger than what's there now? Or is there nothing over it right now?
So, Curry, if you give me a minute, I'll talk to our engineer who has, who designed it.
Sure.
Identify yourself for the board, please.
Good evening, for the record. My name is Chad Brandon, civil engineer with Fieldstone Land Consultants. Our office is located at 206 Elm Street in Milford, New Hampshire. And to answer to your question, Mr. Carrier, we're proposing to construct a box culvert in that location. So we'd be removing the two culverts that currently exist in that location and upgrading that crossing to an open bottom box culvert. And that's a function of current state standards for crossings of this nature. So it will be an upgrade.
Okay. And I, from the application, an upgrade like that, like part of that would be like for a critter crossing? Or that sort of a thing?
It's, it's drainage capacity, but also critter crossing. It's more favorable for, you know, certainly the, the wildlife in the area. It would be an open bottom. We would maintain a natural substrate on the, on the invert of that, that crossing. But yes, it would be a benefit. And I believe that, I was personally on a site walk with the Conservation Commission, but I, I certainly believe they, you know, they viewed that crossing favorably.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Boucher, do you have any questions?
Thank you.
And I don't have any questions either.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Before we get started on input from the public, I, I just want to comment that what's before the zoning board here is a special exception for wetlands work. This is not approval for building anything in particular. That goes before the planning board. So when, if there are comments from, from the public on this case, please restrict yourself to discussion of the wetlands issues that are before us. So with that in mind, I will ask if there's anybody in the room who wishes to speak in favor of this application. Not seeing anybody. Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Please use the raise hand feature. Not seeing anybody. Is there anybody in the room with questions, concerns, or opposition to this application? I am not seeing anybody. Is there anybody on Zoom with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Not seeing any, okay. In that case, I will close the public hearing. You have some, oh, excuse me. Yes, you're, you're quite right. I'm not closing the, because we do have letters. I have them in front of me and I forgot. But thank you, Mr. Boucher, for reminding me. Okay. We have several letters that are, that have questions, concerns, or opposition. Okay. The first one is from Jean Deacon of 20 Clearview Drive. And she writes, "I am submitting an additional comment regarding the meeting tonight. First, what does R and D research and development consist of in terms of future building with no master plan? Building on wetlands can be difficult. They are inundated and saturated by surface groundwater. According to the EPA, a wetland is an ecosystem within itself. It plays an essential role in the environment, supporting an array of plant and animal life. Reasons to not to build on wetlands, they are protected areas. Filling in wetlands will have negative consequences for surrounding areas since the water will need to go somewhere. If possible, it is recommended to avoid constructing on wetlands. For environmental reasons, this exception by Flatley should be denied." Next letter is from, let's see. Well, this is also from Jean Deacon. Does not really add anything that's relevant here, but in opposition. Let's see. Who is this from? And we have something from Derek Tibbo.
I think that was further.
Oh, that was, this, yes, this was actually not, not directed to the board, but it was directed to other people. Okay, so. Okay, so we have one from Kevin Tiller. He says, "My name is Kevin. He's from, okay. My family live at, and I live at Terra Heights Apartments in Building 35, Unit 412 in Nashua. I'm writing to you regarding the proposal to build the commercial flex building on the land next to our apartment. We are very concerned about loud noise from construction as well as increase in traffic and makes other comments about, about noise." But again, the construction is not what's before the board tonight. It's simply the wetlands impact as approved by the Conservation Commission. But the contents of this letter will be in the minutes for, of the meeting. And that, that's, I think, all the letters we have.
That's, that's the rural land trust was, was in?
That's for the, that's for the third case.
Okay. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I made the same mistake, so it's not a problem. Okay. Okay, so Attorney Prunier, you can come back and, or have the engineer come back and respond to the comments from the public.
Chairman, I, I think you pretty much summarized these. They have to do with the, the building itself. The zone is for use of the, of the R and D building is perfectly zoned. The other matters as far as the construction of the building and so forth, or the uses, again, that is before the planning board. And these people who have given this, these letters can certainly attend the planning board and make their views known. But as far as the special exception, they don't mention, it does not apply.
Thank you. Any questions from the board for Attorney Prunier? No? Okay. Now I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Carrier, any comments?
Well, I, in short, I, I'm in favor of the application. I, I think the application, as we received, the written application, to me, it meets all the criteria. I just speak briefly to the two letters we've gotten in opposition. I mean, the first one, what's before us is not building a building on wetlands. It's, it's as I see it, is improving a wetland crossing for a road to access. And I, so I feel that as the Conservation Commission does, that this is a reasonable upgrade of the crossing. And then, you know, the, the other letter about the noise and stuff, that, as you had mentioned, doesn't apply and, and to what we're doing. And I just wanted to have that on the table. So I, I think it meets all the criteria, and I, I think it's an improvement to the, to the crossing that's there now.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
I also agree, I have much more to say. I also agree with Mr. Carrier's statements, and I'll support the application.
And I also in agreement and support the application. Generally, if the Conservation Commission has approved something, some, we have, we would have to find something very unusual to, to deny the application. And I don't see anything out of line here. It does look like an improvement to the wetlands in that area. So I, I am in favor of the application. Mr. Boucher, make a motion? Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the special exception for the John J. Flatley Company owner, L. Daniel Webster Highway and L. Dozer Road, AKA Innovative Way Extension, Sheet A lots 44, 172, requesting special exception from land use code section 190-115, Section A, to permanently impact 725 square feet of wetland, wetland impact associated with upgrading existing twin 36-inch CPP to box culvert and 7,825 square feet of wetland buffer impacts associated with the site grading. It's in PI zone, Ward 8. We find it is listed in table uses. We find it will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. We find that it will not overload public water, drainage, sewer, or other municipal systems. We find that the wetland's special conditions are met per testimony of the applicant. We find it will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood. It will be detrimental to health, morals, or welfare of the residents. We also will note that we are adding the five special conditions that the Conservation Commission stipulated in their letter from April, from their April 5th meeting. So there's five special conditions from that letter from the Conservation Commission, which they favor, they have favorable recommendation for. So again, I make a motion to approve the special exception.
Thank you. Second, Mr. Carrier, thank you for your second. Any discussion of the motion? Ready to vote? Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Carrier, how do you vote?
Mr. Carrier votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Lino, vote in favor. It's three to nothing. The special exception is approved. Again, there's a 30-day window of appeal. Contact the planning department if you have any questions. You know that drill. Okay. Moving on to case number three. Owner is CMI Leasing Corporation. Applicant is Brothers of the Sacred Heart of Bishop Gerton High School. Address 40 Groton Road. Sheet D Lot 7. Requesting use variance from land use code section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 224, to permit a private outdoor recreation facility, including three athletic fields and eight lane running track, four tennis courts, a maintenance and locker room building, parking lot, along with associated site improvements. This is in the R40 zone in Ward 5. Attorney Prunier, I see you are up again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the record, my name is Gerald Prunier. I'm an attorney with offices at 20 Trafalgar Square in Nashua. With me this evening is Tom Sajak from Hayner and Swanson, Rob Prunier from Gerton and Harvey Construction, and Jason Schrezy from the principal of Bishop Gerton. The location of this building, I mean, of this piece of property is coming up on your, on your screen. The, the location of this bill, of this piece of property is 40 Groton Road in Nashua. It's also known, because it's been here before this board on many occasions for other matters, as the Brock's land. It's, it's been used for various things. Right now, it's being used for the storing of material and construction equipment. The site in total is about 47.4 acres, more or less. Approximately 15-plus acres is wetland. Topography is relatively flat. There's an awful lot of property, of wetlands. You can see it on the plans that I believe are attached to your, your minutes, as well as you can see it on, on the particular plan that's on the television screens. The proposed project is to construct three athletic fields, two for lacrosse soccer and one for field hockey, four tennis courts, a running track, a maintenance and locker room building, parking for the use of this particular property, as well as parking. There's a secondary piece of property, a little one, that's shown on the plan, which is being proposed, the Gerton is being proposed to build and connect to the Groton Trust property, which we will discuss, that is on the southern part of the border of Massachusetts, all along this particular property. Presently, if you go out there most every day of the week, you'll see cars parked along the road next to a, a walkway, and they walk into the Groton Road piece of property, Groton Road Trust, excuse me, the Dunstable Road Trust. It's a piece of property that's about 400-plus acres, and it is all conservation land. And it's been used by a lot of people for walking, as well as for conservational uses to teach some of the students. The area will be fenced, except the, where the wetlands, where we encroach upon the wetlands and so forth, and will be lighted. Before I get into the other part of the presentation, you'll find in your package three letters. One is a letter from a butter, from Dana George Jr. of 67 Groton Road, which says that he has no objection to this piece of property. The other one is from Keller Williams, or Randy Turmel, who has done a appraisal of this piece of property and that there would be no dimension of the surrounding properties by the use of these, this property for recreational purposes. And the third letter is from the Dunstable Rural Land Trust, which explains that they abut this piece of property, are in favor, and they think it's a good continuation. I will let the board read that, what that particular letter is. We are here before you this evening because we have one, one word, private. If we were a city or public, we wouldn't have to come before you. It's, what we're proposing is all allowed, is permitted within that district of the R9. If you look at the table of uses, the 224, which we're talking about and refer to this, is all a permitted use in all districts in the city. But because we're private, even though it's going to be used by the same students that use Nashua High South, Nashua High North, we have to come before you and get a variance to allow us to use the property that all the other schools in the city that are public can use without a variance. We feel that there's a hardship on this, on this piece of property because of the number of wetlands. We have, almost a third of this piece of property is covered with wetlands. We have to take care of doing the, in maintaining the protection of those wetlands. It's also a hardship because of what I have just said as far as the use under the ordinance. By the change of one word, we have to come before you. Not that we don't mind coming before you, but we have to come before you to get a, a variance. Granting of the ordinance will be within the spirit and tenet of the ordinance. It's clear, the ordinance says that you can have recreational uses within this district. So it is a particular passive use. The fields would be mostly used during the period of probably from Thanksgiving to March 1st, maybe like this year, probably March 15th with the cold weather and so forth. They are used mostly during the spring and summer because those are mainly the areas of the, the time that the, the sports of field hockey, lacrosse, and soccer are used. The substantial justice will become, will be done. The proposed use, given the nature, location, and configuration of the premises, is not unreasonable nor burdensome to the surrounding properties. The area generally of the city. surrounding properties, the area generally of the city in particular, that is so far out of the city, it's almost in Massachusetts. The other thing that I want to mention is that we're going to, what is shown here is the approximate location of the fields. You'll see that most of the lot is being maintained with its natural buffer, and that is intentional. We want to maintain as much natural part of the buffer as possible, so that the fields would be protected, and they also would not be any of a burden on any of the abutters. We've tried to maintain distances that will allow us to use the flat pieces of the property and the non-wetlands of the property for our fields and everything else, try to maintain as possible away from the abutters. What is not shown on this particular plan is there are two subdivisions that were approved recently, one of them on the other side of Groton Road, and the other one would be more on the easterly side of Groton Road, where Kate is showing the use. The impact on property values, as indicated, we're trying to keep the fields away from any of the presently existing residential properties as possible, so there wouldn't be any interference with them. And as you can see, in some areas, it's over 1,000 feet. The shortest period is probably somewhere in the vicinity of less than 150 feet away from, and that's on the easterly side. Excuse me, the southerly side. Special conditions, in this case, no fear and substantial relationships exist between the general purpose of the Land Use Code and the prohibition against private outdoor recreation facilities in the R40 district. Because the prohibition against private outdoor recreation facilities frustrate the implementation of the general purpose of the Land Use Code. The Land Use Code allows this area to be used for recreational purposes. It just can't be used by a private school. And let me say that Bishop Gerton has a substantial amount of students from Nashua. Also, Nashua suffers from a lack of recreation facilities. By doing so, we help alleviate some of the stress on the athletic and recreational facilities within the city. There is a lack of use of those facilities. This would be for the public benefit. As part of the educational program of Bishop Gerton, it seeks to improve the minds and bodies of its students. Granting this variance will enable Bishop Gerton to provide better athletic opportunities to its students and to reduce Bishop Gerton's needs to use the public facilities owned by the city of Nashua. I'd like to mention also that we have not mentioned anything about football or baseball. Those fields will stay at Bishop Gerton and be used on Lund Road facility. I'd be glad to answer any questions the board may have.
Mr. Boucher?
Just curious, out of just curiosity, the four tennis courts proposed to this facility, is that replacing the tennis courts that are at the main campus right now, or is this in addition to?
They're replacing them. They're replacing. Right now, they're basketball courts.
Excuse me?
Right now, those tennis courts at Bishop Gerton are basketball court.
All right, and they're maintaining those. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Currier?
I was just curious, the proposed locations of the fields, is there, did you say that's the flat part? Is that not wet, or is that wet? Will the anticipated shift in the wet?
It's a flat part, and it's away from the wetlands.
Oh, okay.
It's, our engineer is with us this evening, Tom Sajak, and that was the main purpose, is to stay out of the wetlands and away from them. That's why this particular use is a good use for this piece of property, because it allows us to do that.
It's not really germane to this application, but I think that, was there an application similar to this up at the north end for BG some time ago?
A long time ago, there was.
And did that come to fruition?
No.
No, okay.
That was dropped.
Okay. I'm all set.
I don't have any questions.
Thank you.
As Attorney Pridger noted, we do have three letters in favor of this application. We have one from the Dunstable Rural Land Trust, that, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but they consider the proposed change in usage very beneficial to the area now and in the long term. With a recreational facility in place combined with the trust's acreage, there will be about 475 acres for people of all ages to enjoy for generations. We have a letter from Dana George Jr., 67 Groton Road. I reviewed the plan being proposed by Bishop Gerton for recreational facilities on the Brock's property. I have no objections to the variance request. We have a letter from Keller Williams Gateway Realty, saying that their opinion, that the variance is requested by the Brothers of the Sacred Heart of Bishop Gerton High School, Inc., if granted, will not diminish the property values of any of the abutting properties or of any properties in the immediate area. Each of these letters will be included with the minutes of the meeting. And I will now ask if there's anybody?
Mr. Chairman, can I just make one other comment? One of the things that we, I forgot to mention, was there will be a gate, I mentioned the fencing around the property, there will be a gate where our traffic comes into the parking. Our gate is separated from the ones, from the parking that will be used, that we're providing for the Dunstable Land Trust. We will have a separate parking lot, so that when we're not using it, they will be locked. We will also, of course, have to have security out there as well, but we want to keep the use of this piece of property to Bishop Gerton, to its things, to its students, and not have people showing up at all times of the night.
Good, thank you. Oh, Mr. Currier, questions?
Yeah, just, if this application were approved, is, would the Brothers of the Sacred Heart be intent on owning this, or?
They're going to own it.
Own it, okay.
They're going to own it.
Okay, thank you.
So, back to, is there anybody in the room who wishes to speak in favor of this application? I see a hand raised. Please step up to the lectern and give your name and address to the record, and you have five minutes.
I'm David Tully, 1070 Main Street, Dunstable, representing the Dunstable Rural Land Trust. And I said, we have a 420 acres abutting this. Right now, it's used for people walking during COVID. You know, many people use it. They go through the area that Mr. Pridger spoke about, from the Groton roadside, up through to Main Street and Dunstable, and this would just make a great addition. It's, you keep almost 500 acres open, permanently open in the future. Our property, we have the 420 acres right now, which will all be covered by conservation restrictions, so this would be, bring it together, almost 500 acres in an area that you just don't find anymore. And I said, our board is very much in favor of this request.
Thanks. Any question? Mr. Currier?
Yeah, just, you had mentioned, and so did the attorney, that on Groton Road, you know, quite often you see cars parked there, you see them all the time. So, is it, it's not trespassing to park there and walk onto the, you know, the Dunstable Land Trust south of there? I mean, I'm just curious, because I didn't?
Our land is all, it's open to the public.
Okay.
See, it's a not-for-profit organization, so all of our land, we have about 800 acres in total, in two or three different places, and it's all open to the public.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks. Anybody else in the room who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Not seeing anybody. Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Okay, Jim Nero of Sixth Mystic Court, your hand is raised, thank you. You have five minutes.
Right, so first I want to thank Attorney Pridger for inviting us in to review the plans. I really appreciated that. And I think it is, it's going to be a great use of the property, so I'm more than happy to see that happen. I do have one concern, is that if you look at the properties that have been developed around that property, in fact, that property was in line to be developed as well, and there was going to be a sidewalk put in. I'm not sure if this is the right venue to discuss that, but now we will have no sidewalk there, and we now already have a crossing from the, let's see, the Terrell Farm development over to basically just the woods, and that was supposed to go to a future sidewalk. So I guess my bigger concern, and I do believe that this is a good use of the property. Unfortunately, these other developments have had waivers, with the understanding that this would have been developed as another housing development, and now with those waivers, there is no sidewalk connecting all those neighborhoods. And I can't walk down to the Land Trust either. I would have liked to, but, so, any thoughts on that?
Okay, so, all right, so your question is about sidewalk access. And just for the record, I see you put in your address as Sixth Mystic Court, is that in Nashua?
It's in Nashua.
Okay.
On the very west side of the property.
Right, we need to know for the record, the address. Okay, so we'll get that question answered for you. Okay, you can put your hand down on Zoom if you're done. Any questions from the board, from Mr. Nero? No? Okay. Anybody else on Zoom who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Not seeing anybody. Is there anybody in the room with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Not seeing anybody. Is there anybody on Zoom with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Not seeing anybody? Okay. Attorney Pridger, you have five minutes to respond to the question about sidewalk access. I thought I saw something in the application about that, but maybe you could elaborate.
No, there's no sidewalk. Sidewalks are always a concern to the planning board, and they, it takes up usually on every subdivision a period of time. But this is a subdivision where houses are being sold and people are making money. This is not making any money. This is a conservational use. I'm sure that the planning board will want to discuss this with us, and where we'll lean to, I see Matt over there nodding his head, and I'm sure that we will have a discussion concerning that, and hopefully make it fair and equitable to all the parties involved. That's all I want to say about sidewalks, I don't mind.
Okay. That's good. Okay, at this point, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Boucher, your comments?
I'm in favor of the application. I was just, I was asking some questions only because I was curious whether or not it was going to move to relieve some of the pressure at the main campus, but again, nothing that would make me change my mind on the application. I think it fits in. Again, not being a private school, I don't think we'd be sitting here. This high school's been around since the early 60s. I'm a proud graduate of that school. I came from Lowell, I drove up there and, you know, had a great education there. So again, that's not making me biased, it's just knowing that the school has developed over those years, and I think that this need is way overdue for the school. And I think that it's, it'd be a great benefit to the city, and also to the, you know, recreation that can be accessed through that property. So I'm going to support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Currier?
I was certainly keeping an ear open to any opposition, you know, particularly by abutters. I mean, I was kind of concerned that there might be some of that, which I think could be, you know, legitimate, but we're really not hearing any opposition. We're hearing a lot of support. We have a support letter by one of the abutters on Groton Road, and I think, to me, it's a big boost that the Dunstable Rural Land Trust is, you know, supportive of this, because I did see it the way they see it, which is, you know, they have a lot of public land, and that gets used a lot. I see cars parked there all the time. And I think, you know, having this as open fields versus like the current operation isn't kind. And while it's in our application, you know, I just want to get on the record that, you know, pretty close by, we have the Nature of Things Learning Center, we have the dog park, we have the Terrell property, there's a rather enormous amount of public open land with fields, and folks playing, you know, organized sports, the crickets and things like that, you know, right up the road. So while this is a use variance, there's a lot of uses that I think are very similar to this in the area that kind of match the amount of R40 zoning that's in the area. So I think it meets the criteria of a use variance, and I'm in favor of it.
Thank you. I have nothing else to add to what my colleagues have said. I am in favor of this application. Mr. Boucher, thank you for offering a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the use variance of CMI Leasing Corporation. Owner, Brothers of the Sacred Heart of Bishop Gerton High School Incorporated. Applicant is at 40 Groton Road, Sheet D, Lot 7, requesting use variance from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 224, to permit a private outdoor recreation facility, including three athletic fields, an eight-lane running track, four tennis courts, a maintenance slash locker room building, parking lot, along with associated site improvements. It's in the R40 zone, Ward 5. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of property and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method or reason feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. Again, this is somewhat of a unique property, as it's been in this current state for a long time. As noted, there are many different uses that are similar to what's being proposed in nature of that. And again, the benefit of having this development there is going to be a net benefit for all involved. We find that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We find it will not adversely affect property values surrounding fossils. We find it's not contrary to public interest, and we find it substantial justice will be served. So again, I make a motion to approve the use variance.
Thank you, Mr. Currier, for your second. Any discussion of the motion?
I just, I guess I wanted to get in before that the issue of the sidewalk, I agree with Attorney Pridger that, I know it was testified by him, but I don't think it's this board's purview to stipulate that or deal with that issue, and I just wanted to concur with that.
Yeah, very good. So you seconded, okay. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Currier, how do you vote?
Mr. Currier votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Leno, vote in favor. That's three to nothing. The variance has been approved. Again, 30-day window of appeal. Contact the Planning Department if you have any questions. So, moving on to board business, we have no re- Okay, we have no rehearing request. We have received an agenda for the next meeting.
I haven't seen it yet, that's right.
And review for regional impact. Mr. Boucher, do you see any regional impact?
I do not.
Okay, Mr. Currier?
I just a question, the 70 Ridge Road, is that? No, I don't see a regional impact on that.
Okay, so, and I don't see any regional impact.
So I don't see any regional impact on the agenda.
Okay, very good. So, and I also don't see any regional impact. We have minutes from April 12th, where I was not present, but I did review them. Any comments on the minutes from April 12th?
No.
Mr. Currier?
No.
Okay, and I have no comments. Motion to approve the minutes? I'll make the motion to approve the minutes, even though I wasn't there. Do I have a second? Mr. Boucher, thank you for your second. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Currier, how do you vote?
Mr. Currier votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Leno, vote in favor. Okay, minutes are approved. Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Mr. Courier makes a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Mr. Boucher, have a?
He's, oh, I thought.
You made, all right. You guys can fight it out.
No, 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 I think you could just adjourn.
Yeah, that's true. We don't need a second and all of that, okay.
So you could just call it.
We are adjourned at 7:40 P.M.